Welcome to the special council meeting of Thursday, April 25th, 2024 at 4:40 PM in council chambers and via Zoom. We acknowledge that the town of Kirkland Lake is located on the traditional territory of Algonquin peoples, including Beaver House First Nation and unceded territory of other indigenous peoples. We recognize the presence of the Algonquin, Inishnaabe, Ojibwe Cree, and Maiti people in our community since time immemorial and honor their stewardship and care of these lands. We hereby affirm our continued commitment and responsibility to reconciliation. Call to order in a moment of silence. Item number two, approval of the agenda.
Moved by Councilor Dolly Dyken, seconded by Councilor Casey Owens. We resolve that the agenda for the special meeting of council held on Thursday, April 25th, 2024 be approved as circulated. And that section 15 of the Town of Kirkland Lake's procedural bylaw, number 1575, as amended, be suspended to allow for a recess to hold a public meeting prior to the commencement of regular business noted in item five. Acceptance of minutes and recommendations.
All in favor? Opposed, none noted, item carried unanimous. Item number three, declaration of pecuniary interest. There appears to be none. Item number four, petitions and delegations, there are none this evening. We shall now recess to move into the public meeting. Welcome to the public meeting. Proposed retail business holiday exemption bylaw of Thursday, April 25th, 2024. Call to order. Good afternoon. I hereby call this public meeting of Thursday, April 25th regarding the proposed retail business holiday exemption bylaw to order. Declaration of pecuniary interest. Is there any declarations? None noted. Item number three, summary report. Item 3.1, proposed retail business holiday exemption bylaw. Dan Lavardur, Director of Development and Enterprise Services. Thank you, sir.
Good evening. Have you met a mayor? On the 14th of March, I brought forward the staff report in regard to the holiday exemption bylaw. Tonight's the public meeting just to address any questions, concerns that members of the public may have. Couple of items just to keep in mind in regard to the, this change would be that if councils should choose to not go forth with all choices, that the responsibility for enforcement would fall within the bylaw section and the town would be responsible for the added cost of enforcing. So, I'm happy. Is there anything else?
Thank you for that report. Item number four, confirmation of notice. Madam Deputy Clerk, how was number given?
Notice of the public meeting was given in accordance with the Town of Kirkland Lake's notice bylaw 2247 by publishing said notice on the town's website 14 days in advance as of April 3rd, 2024. Subsequent to the postponement of the public meeting due to the declared emergency on April 12, a revised notice was published on April 16th, 2024. Subsequent notice coordinated with the town's various social media sites and within daily local radio broadcasts.
Excellent, thank you. Item number five, correspondence received. Madam Deputy Clerk, was there any correspondence received from members of the public surrounding the proposed retail business holiday exemption bylaw?
Madam Chair, I confirm that no correspondence was received by the clerk's office in relation to the proposed retail business holiday exemption bylaw.
Excellent, thank you. Item number six, comments and questions from members of the public. Before I ask the deputy clerk my next question, I would like to remind all council members that this is a public meeting. There is no discussion or debate with members of the public. Item number seven, comments and questions from members of the public. Madam Deputy Clerk, has anyone registered to provide comments or pose questions in person or electronically?
Madam Chair, I confirm that no one has reached the clerk's office to register or to request to participate electronically in this public meeting.
Excellent, thank you. I will now invite a members of the public to line up by the center aisle. You will each have an opportunity to provide your comments or pose questions. You may only speak once. Please state your name and address for the deputy clerk. Is there anyone here to speak this evening? Seeing none, we will continue. Item number eight, consideration of proposed bylaws. Madam Deputy Clerk, please read the directions stemming from this public meeting.
That council receive the comments, questions from members of the public and that the draft bylaw to permit retail business establishments to operate on holidays for the maintenance or development of tourism within the geographic limits of the town of Kirkland Lake as presented be brought forward for three readings at the May 9th, 2024 regular meeting of council.
Excellent, this is the recommendation moving forward. Item number nine, this concludes the public meeting of the proposed retail business holiday exemption bylaw. Thank you for. Moving on, we will now move back into the regular meetings, regular special council meeting. Item number five, acceptance of minutes and recommendations. 5.1 council minutes.
Moved by Councilor Janice Ranger, seconded by Councilor Ladd Shaba. We have resolved that council approve the minutes of the following meetings. Minutes of the regular meeting of council held April 2nd, 2024. Minutes of the public meeting, we propose 2024 budget, past table, held April 4th, 2024. Minutes of the public meeting, we supplemental 2024 water and wastewater rates, held April 4th, 2024. Minutes of the public meeting, we propose 2024 user fees and charges, held April 4th, 2024. Minutes of the special meeting of council held April 9th, 2024. And minutes of the emergency meeting of council, held April 15th, 2024.
All in favor? Opposed, none noted, item carried unanimous. Item 5.2, committee of council minutes.
Moved by Councilor Patrick Kylie, seconded by Councilor Ladd Shaba. We have resolved that council adopt the minutes of the following meeting. Minutes of the Tech Pioneer Residence Committee of Management, held November 27th, 2024.
All in favor? Opposed, none noted, item carried unanimous. Item number 5.3, local and regional board minutes.
Moved by Councilor Casey Owens, seconded by Councilor Dolly Dyken. We have resolved that council receive the minutes of the following meetings. Minutes of the Timiskaming Health Unit Board of Health Meeting, held March 6th, 2024. And special meeting held March 25th, 2024.
All in favor? Opposed, none noted, item carried unanimous. Item number six point, sorry, item number six, reports of municipal officers and communications. At this time, I'm going to ask Finance Chair, Councilor Janice Ranger to take the chair.
So, 6.1, 2024 financial municipal budget update, Lloyd Crocker, Treasurer.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you to the rest of council. So, we're here hopefully at the end of the process of the budget. There's a small report included in your package this evening to kind of summarize where we've been, the process we walked through. You'll see that the final tax rate for residential properties, the increase is 5.85%, which is consistent with what we discussed at the last meeting. There's a couple other points I kind of like to just revisit a little bit and reemphasize. So, we talked about TPR in our last meeting and I had mentioned that the provincial budget indicated there's some dollars coming to improve their situation. We're still kind of on hold there in the sense that we do not have a concrete number to make any decisions on. So, the way it sits is that once we are assuming the budget gets passed tonight, sorry, any surplus that over the budget compared to budget for TPR would fall into the general surplus for future use, much like any other department. But just to be clear about what happens, you know, and I'll certainly bring it back to council once we have some concrete numbers. So, you have some idea of what the effect is of their announcement. We're still expecting it to be pretty significant, but guessing is going to help us. There was a couple of questions that I just want to kind of show a little bit more from our last meeting. We asked, we were asked about the firefighters, whether it was in the budget. And I'm not sure I correctly answered that, but yes, it is in the budget. Did we consider using mutual aid? We did answer that, but we just want to be clear that we have three mutual aid and automatic aid agreements with communities around us. One of them is fully trained, or lack of better name, so they could, they're able to help with interior fire suppression, but the other two couldn't. And given the distance, that's part of the reasoning behind those, by those who weren't changing anything. Again, did you consider a change to working hours to reduce the budget? Yeah, other alternatives were discussed and the hire of the two firefighters was authorized as part of the collective bargaining process and yourself, the process that you went through yourselves. Do we consult anyone before ratifying the contract? Town consulted with legal counsel. Research was completed on comparative collective agreements and other arbitrated awards. Economic development, there was a question about whether we could, whether we're putting enough emphasis on the economic development department given the drop in the budget. So, you know, the CIO made the decision to promote the manager of economic development to Director of Development Enterprise Services. The director now oversees planning, building, bylaw, economic development, and tourism. Keep in mind that there was a really shuffle of some other responsibilities. So, it's, we're not creating workload that's not consistent with workloads for other directors and within our, within our organization. It's very much as our strategic plan identified and much of the discussion is very much a priority for this management team and of course for council as you directed in that strategic plan. And we were able to obviously benefit from considerable decrease in the budget by doing that kind of, those movements. And I just want to reiterate because many of the questions in that evening were really operational in nature. And although we're more than happy to kind of address those kind of questions, the budget process is not really well suited to addressing those questions. So, I just want to reiterate that, you know, we have a process. If we have, if somebody has a concern with the operations and needs help or wants to direct the town to something they're seeing that's, you know, whatever it be from a pothole to a missing fence post, we do have an online system, service request system it's called. You can also stop by town hall. I believe the major departments also have copies. You can get a paper copy of the form and of course you can phone the main line and we'll direct you to the right department if there's concerns about operating issues. So, I just wanted to reiterate that because quite a few of the questions are more centered on that than, you know, the budget numbers. I think that's most of what I wanted to kind of summarize. I'd be happy to take questions or comments.
Counselor Shaba.
Yeah, through you, Madam Chair, to the Treasury. Last meeting, you brought up the issue of arrears. And to the best of my recollection, you indicated 4.7 million dollars. And I was, correct me if I'm wrong, please. And then you said something about you're working on 600,000 dollars or something. So, my question is, when you brought it up, so how are the arrears going to impact this budget? And what efforts are we putting into it? At least get some of those.
Through you, Madam Chair, to Counselor Shaba. Yes, the members reporting are correct. The 600,000, so we have 39 properties right now in the tax sale process. So, that's the taxes associated with them, taxes and fees associated with them. So, they're kind of sitting on the side outside of our normal tax collection system. Takes, I think I mentioned in this case, it's taking close to two years by the time we finish that process. Shouldn't take more, much more than a year, but you know, what happened, I guess, is there's a hangover from COVID and there's a lot of municipalities like ourselves who are kind of catching up and using the tax sale process much more heavily now. So, that's, that's the lag. As far as collections, we only have one person right now working on collections. We have another person who assists her, you know, when, when her normal job is allowed for that. So, there's not an awful lot of phone calls going out, like cold calls saying you owe us type of thing. We send out lots of notices, we send out lots of letters. And we certainly, you know, we see people, I wouldn't be afraid to say daily, who come in to discuss, you know, what they owe and what they can do to fix that. So, you know, obviously we'd like to expand on that collection process, but we're just kind of limited by resources right now to go much deeper. The tax out process is quite consuming in time, but it comes in bumps of, you know, chunks of time. So, yeah, I'm not sure, but fully answered your question.
Yeah, well, yes, can I follow up, please?
Yes.
Thank you. Yes, you, you did. The other thing, if we do get money in the future, if they give, so how would that amount impact this budget? Or is this just overweight or something that's going to the reserve or something that could be used to relieve some of these expenses here? So, educate me on that. How did I, so someone comes, like, oh, okay, I'm going to give this, I don't know, so, so how do we disperse that generally?
Thank you. Sorry, through you, Madam Chair, I apologize. Didn't say that in the first question, I missed it. So, budget wise, the collection of taxes doesn't directly hit your budget until you either have a write-off or you change your tax rates. So, we go through the normal process every year of the budget. That changes the tax rates. Collection side, until we decide to write off a tax, it doesn't hit our budget. It's not an expense. It's, it's a cash flow issue. It's a significant cash flow issue. You know, we average something a little bit north of 3 million dollars, you know, most of the year when we're not in a building cycle. And so, that's cash we could have in the bank earning interest. So, there is a loss of interest if you want to call it that. That number will never be zero, but it could be lower. Until we decide to write off and you'll see that when we get to the end of the tax sale property, any properties that don't sell, we essentially will, and some of the ones that will sell, will end up doing some write-offs and that does hit the budget. It's not going to happen this year. It'll probably be in next year's budget and it will depend heavily on how much interest we have in those properties when we go through the process. So, I can't really tell you, you saw the 600,000, depending on how, how much people take up those properties. It could be zero, it could be 200,000, it just, you know, how much interest? There isn't all of those properties. We'll kind of determine that. Very hard to budget for.
Yeah.
But it's a cash flow issue most of the time, but when we go through the tax sale or something changed in town. So, you know, in the past, when the mine shut down, you know, suddenly the whole system was at more at risk of having bad debts and tax collection problems. There's a scenario where you might try a little bit harder to estimate how much was bad debt, bad taxes. But right now, we're kind of waiting for the tax sale process to, you know, those 39 properties are a very large portion of our delinquent accounts, although we have some more lined up for later. But until we get through the process, it's really pretty hard to put a number on what will happen. But yes, there will be a budget effect and probably in 2025, once we get through the process.
Counselor Deppins.
Thank you, Finance Chair, to the Treasurer. You mentioned that it's an increase of 5.85% for the, I'm going to get it wrong, you know, residential municipal tax levy or rate. What is the actual rate?
That is, sorry, through you, Madam Chair. That is the rate for the residential properties. The tax system starts with the residential properties and all of the other properties are a multiple of the residential property. So, you know, some of the other ones, depending, trying to see how I can get this out without making it into an exercise with an accountant. We, the residential rate becomes the base rate. The industrial, commercial rates, the multi, multi-residential rates, they're essentially multiples or fractions of the residential rate. I'm not sure if that's truly answering the question.
Yeah, a follow-up, please. Now, I guess what's going on, it was used, it's an increase of 5.85% for the residential municipal. So, is that, that's the actual rate for 2024? Okay, so that, that was just the.
Sorry, yeah, through you, Madam Chair. Just to be clear, when we talked about the 9.8, we put, I was talking about the residential rate. The other rates are some mix of that, right? We talk about the residential rate mostly to keep it simple rather than me quoting six different rates every time I mention a rate. And it is the base rate. It's the rate that the other rates are built off of. So, it just kind of simplifies the discussion, but 5.85 is the real percentage. And it might be 5.84 or something. It's like a six-digit thing by the time I'll get stung with it, but that is the real residential increase.
Increase.
Yes.
Okay, so that's where I'm.
Sorry.
I guess, let's go.
So, based on what you paid last year, increase it by 5.8 dot, dot, dot. And then you'll know what your next tax. Well, it'll be different for everybody.
So, through you, Madam Chair, in the bylaw, that's, that's in there tonight. There's a table of rates. I don't have it memorized, but there's a table of rates, what the residential rate is, what the industrial rate is. That's in the bylaw here tonight. If you want to look up the exact number, like was mentioned by the chair, it may not be that exact, that rate times your assessment. It may not be exactly 5.85 from last year. If your assessment change, for example, the rates on the new assessment. So, it's not a perfect relationship for every single rate payer in town. But for the vast majority of people who didn't have any changes in their assessment, 5.85 is what they're looking at. Increase.
Counselor Dyken, so you had. Counselor Kirk.
Kyle. Through you, acting there. For curiosity, did we have much of an increase in assessment or was it so frozen?
Through you, Madam Chair, Counsel Kyle. It's in theory frozen. It's frozen for everybody that exists as of 2020. The only changes that we would be seeing would be new properties added to the roll or properties that change their property through the, through the construction process. So, we went out and built a garage, your assessment would be increasing. If you went out and built an extension on your house, your assessment's increasing. It would still be based on the 2020 numbers. So, it's not like a fair value increase, but it's what impact does right now until such time as the province unfreezes that system.
So, there's no significant change?
Not this year.
No.
I think it was just over what in 1.2 million, I believe, the increase in the assessment, which for us is pennies.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Counselor Shaba.
Yeah, thank you, through Madam Chair. You probably have the, the numbers when it comes to population because our population keep bouncing up and down. We're 10,000, we're 8,000, we're 7,500. What is, what is our, thank you, asking the question, what is our number that the tax will probably tell us how many people are, who actually have, they're paying taxes? Could be more, be more, you know, be eligible to pay taxes like children or not. But what is the, what is the number that you're working with?
Through you, Madam Chair, to Counsel Shaba. So, we don't technically use population to calculate municipal taxes. We use properties, whether they're a resident, you know, a residential property with three bedrooms could have six people in it. It could have two people in it. So, the, the impact system in the past was used for population purposes for the election.
Yeah.
That's changing, I believe, on the next one. Clerk can correct me if it isn't the next one, but I believe the timeline's for the next one where we rely on the provincial system instead of impact. But it doesn't change the, the actual levy or the assessment. Obviously, I suppose if you have more apartments in a building, it'll have a higher assessment. So, maybe population a little bit, but not directly. Yeah.
Any other questions from council? Great, then we'll move forward. I need a mover and a seconder for the Counselor Shaba, seconded by Counselor Owens.
So, moved by Counselor Ladd Shaba, seconded by Counselor Casey Owen. We have resolved that report number 2024 or 25, we have a 2024 final municipal budget update received for information. And that council, the corporation of the Town of Kirkland Lake hereby approve the 2024 budget as presented. And finally, that the appropriate bylaws relating to the 2024 budget be presented for three readings on April 25th, 2024. All in favor?
Those opposed? Motion carries. Oh, yeah. I'll need that, thank you. Thank you, Finance Chair. And we'll be moving on to item 6.2, Planet Youth Timiskaming. This will be reviewed by Bonnie Sack, Director of Community Services.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, through you to the rest of council. This is an information item to share with you a little bit more about what Planet Youth is and at what stage municipal officials are in continuing on Planet Youth. The, the report is fairly explanatory as well as the supplementary items that have been nice and bright and colorful prepared by Timiskaming Health. So, I'm just going to touch on some of the highlight areas. Planet Youth is in Timiskaming. It's a five-year pilot project and it's based on the Icelandic prevention model. And really, the whole goal, it's a, it, the goal of it is to reduce drug and alcohol use in starting young adults. So, really looking at grade 10 and 11s to get some data, which I'm going to get into in a second, and really see what can we as a community do to reduce the, the start of using alcohol or drugs with our youth. It really looks at what are the root causes in your community and it talks a lot about protective factors and risk factors. And I love these ideas. Protective factors are things like your relationships with your family and your friends, school activities that you're involved in. There's things that really protect the youth and make them more resilient. The risk factors are pretty straightforward. Age of first drink, if you smoke, if you vape, if you bring your, your phone into the bedroom with you at night and you scroll way too late into the night and have less sleep hours. So, those are some of your risk factors. When you look at the stats of Iceland, it's quite remarkable. So, in 1977, they had a 42% rate of youth substance use. And over a 20-year period, by the time they got to 2022, it was down to 5%. So, they had a number of strategies that they've shared with us in a couple of different forums that we've had. And their strategies work for them, might work for Kirkland Lake, might not, might work for Timmins. There's a number of communities now in Canada that are using this model. In order to get, in order to get information that's really true to Timiskaming, a number of surveys were done. And this is to me what makes this so successful because this is Kirkland Lake data. So, we are Timiskaming as a district, but it's broken down into north, so that's Kirkland Lake, central kind of the Ingleheart area and south of the Timiskaming shores area and surrounding communities. So, surveys were done in the schools this past fall, grade 10 and 11 students, very high response rate, 83% response rate. A little easier because it's then in the schools, you have a captive audience. If the child was absent that day or if it's a child or youth, sorry, that chooses not to attend school. There were strategies put in place to try to capture this data and I think that's why the response rate is so high. So, there's 561 students that were surveyed. The questions were really interesting. So, the, the group themselves designed the survey with, with guidance from, from the representatives from Iceland. But there were things like, do you drink energy drinks? How, how many hours a day are you scrolling? Do you smoke? Do you vape? Do you easter egg? Do you drink? If you drink, where did you get your alcohol from? Was it provided by a parent? Did you, did you get a friend to buy it for you? Did you steal it? Where do you drink? Do you drink in a bar? Do you drink at home? Do you drink in a friend's house? Social media? Um, social media, um. Oh, things like. Are other students in your school nice to you? Like, really interesting questions. So the data was accumulated over a couple of months, and we just got some, we've kind of had some snippets of data, and just this week, we actually had a local coalition, so now we're just a north coalition. And the data has been disseminated to us, so we, we know the, the results. This is going to now be disseminated to key people in the community in the month of May. So really, key people is everybody, but it's definitely going to the parents, it's definitely going to the schools and the teachers, definitely going to coaches. But it, there's going to be an opportunity for the greater population to have access to the data as well, it will be for the north end. So it's not going to, it's not going to pit one school against another, that's not the intent, the intent is, here's your data from Timiskaming, here's your data from north, south, and. Central, to see if there's differences, and there is differences, which is kind of interesting. And then the next step, which kind of gets me a little bit more fired up, is what do we do with the data? So these local, um, action coalitions or committees are now going to brainstorm ideas, how do we get the data out there? And once the data is out there, how do we get teams of people to work together to figure out what to do with the data? So some of the things that, that Iceland just shared with us that worked, just to kind of, to give you an idea of what could be done, they had, um. They had the opportunity for youth to participate in activities at no charge to the youth. So we don't know whether that was, you know, so did they get a government grant, did they have sponsors, those types of things? But basically, each student had a, a little card, you know, so you could do three hundred dollars worth of activities per year, whether it was you were going to take a, a dance class, or you were going to join a, a club. But it was something to do that provided you with an opportunity for an outlet, culture, recreation, those types of things. Um, I think they also engaged in things like, um, contracts between parents and students, and we've seen that through the years as well, that I vouch that. I will not do this, or I shall do this, that I vouch with my parent, and, and the parent is supposed to keep the child accountable, the youth accountable as much as possible. Curfews are an idea that have been used in some countries, so there's a lot of ideas out there, and the next step is to figure out what will work in Kirkland Lake. Um, in the next little while, we're going to be doing some community goal setting workshops and coming up with, and this is the key, evidence-based and community-informed solutions. So just kind of to wrap it up, this is an initiative that. I get very passionate about, because I can see that activity that we do now can make a difference in the lives of our youth and the youth of our future. And if our youth become healthier and happier, we are going to have a much more successful Kirkland Lake than if we don't work at this level. So Mayor White and I have evolved since the beginning, we've been there since the, the onset when this, beginning for Timiskaming, and I think it's something that we both feel that it's time very well spent. So basically, just enough to even certainly open any questions if you have any.
Absolutely, before I open the floor, I do, uh, want to thank Director Sackrider, it, what really impressed upon me. Is this is a different approach than we've seen in the past, and it's like a river, the, the picture of the river. So normally, when we think of addictions and, and problems with our youth, we see the kids drowning, and we're trying to help them drowning. This idea here is to get them before they even get into that river, and I think that's a really unique way to think of this problem. And it's not a short-term program, this is something that took decades in the original, and it's going to take decades now. Um, and I do think it really challenges societal norms. And it is possible to change what we accept as normal, we think of drinking alcohol as a rite of passage. Something all teenagers do, but it doesn't have to be that way, and this is proven in, you know, at a time, we used to never wear seatbelts. We've changed that, so I really think this program, because it's really localized, both in the data that is collected and the solutions. And I think it's, it's a really unique thing, and it's really something that we cannot get behind, so thank you for that. Go ahead, Counselor Ranger.
Thank you, through you, uh, Madam Mayor, to Bonnie, um, two, a two-part question, they're not related to each other, but. Is there any possibility to bump it up a, against the community safety plan or to overlap it? Is my first question.
Let me add to that one first. You, Madam Mayor, to Counselor Ranger, absolutely, this is actually one of the pillars of the community safety well-being plan, so it originated as. In the community safety well-being plan, this was an area of, that was identified for Timiskaming, and this is a solution to help us with that plan, so working very closely, yes.
Great, uh, mine, yep, so my follow-up question is, uh, not directed to that, but do we still have access to the ambassadors of this program? Now that they've done the initial surveys, or is it now just the materials and information that they've given, and we move forward on our own?
And again, through you, Madam Mayor, to Counselor Ranger, that is kind of the beauty of it, is that they are our partners throughout the process, so there is a financial commitment, this is being taken, um. Taken under each Timiskaming helping is win, right now, there's no financial contribution required from the municipality, it's one of their programs. But there is on the five-year pilot, there's an annual fee, which means that we have the expertise, um, from the, from Iceland right now, um, to run the project, that's great.
Counselor Shaba.
Okay, thank you very much, uh, to you, uh, Madam Chair, to the Director, well, this is very timely, thank you very much for bringing this forward. Um, uh, before I get to my, uh, question, I'd like to say that, uh, few years ago, um, substance abuse and all these things. People would just write them off as a big city problem, you know, problem go out of our control, and then all of a sudden, it became, uh, more or less, uh, poor people's problem. But, you know, as time progresses, now we all realize that it's all of our problems, everybody's problems, so we have to try to do something about it to help our, our young people. My question to you is that, uh, is there a way this could create a linkage to, uh, other organizations such as brothers and sisters or something like that, that they're really doing their best? To help kids with all kinds of activities, you know, when I was involved with soccer, I'm telling you, there are a lot of kids that, you know, born and raised here, that have never gone out there to fish. I've never gone to the forest, went to, to enjoy the beautiful forest that we have, it's no, their activity is nothing at all. So I think the kids would need a lot of activities to keep them busy, to keep them engaged, uh, if we can find an organization that we can link, uh, link up with, that will help the children in, in that regard. That will help, you know, a long way to at least take them away from the pathway towards substance abuse.
You, Madam Mayor, to Counselor Shaba, I love that idea, I think that's fabulous, I think that's part of it, part of it is, let's get the community to give us input as to what would work. And I mean, that, we'd be looking for people, like when you say, hey, what about this, and I think then, is there an organization that can fulfill this, is there a gap? If there is a gap, what can we do to help fill that gap? Um, I had another thought as you were speaking. It's gone, but it may come back to me.
Counselor Owens.
Um, so first, it's a comment, and I have a short question, uh, I think this is awesome, I've had, because you have opportunity to have a front row seat. The last twenty years has shown that this change in generation, from where I started my career to where I'm at now, uh, the change in our youth is. It, it's incre- and, and not a good incredible, it's, it's scary as to what's going on, and what some of these kids are going through, and how well. They hide it, 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 but, but, and, and so, so this is a great tool we have at our. Under our hands, I guess, to be able to, to try and change that, and it's going to take not just the input from the kids, but the parents and the community, and, and I think this is going in the right direction. My question is, and I don't even know if you can answer this, if it's been brought up in the meetings. In the merger of THU and PHU, because I don't think this is being applied in Timmins right now, what happens to this program? When and if the merger is totally successful by the end of the year? Is this something that's going to be cut, or is, because it's, it's a Misscaming thing, we get to keep on going with it, and, because we've done a lot of, of legwork to get to where we're at? So I don't, I, I don't even think you can answer the question, but it, it can be brought up at one point with.
And I'm not sure if Madam Mayor knows as well, when we first had the presentation that was Intimiscaming shores, they had mentioned that Timmins was very much interested, and I was. I was believing they had also engaged in this program, now perhaps they have not, um, that, I think they were, but I thought they had chosen to do it, I may be wrong. Um, that being said, what has been verbally told to us is that this program will continue, is what we have been told, and again, that I. I don't know if the people that are answering a hundred percent know that. You bring up a very good point, because with the merger, things could change, priorities could change, um, people on the table could change, so. I think we have to keep it on our radar, and maybe it's even a political question, that this is important for Kirkland Lake, and that we need to make sure that this stays on as a program of the new health, yeah, thank you for that. I, I didn't remember if I may.
Yep.
Counselor Shaba, the, the other thing I thought of in your question, um, there's been a lot of talk about youth hubs and about youth centers. And how they will fit into this, because that, that's one of the things that a lot of the students said they need, they need a place, whether it's a hangout place, whether it's a place to get a little bit of help. Whether it's with homework, with stressful situations in their lives, with, it's, it's a, the whole concept of the center, so there's been a lot of talk about that. Um, there is actually a provincial youth hub, um, program, we have had a presentation by the Chair of that, and how can it work? Municipalities doing it all different ways, some of the things that we've heard is, some municipalities have a van, and the van is the hub. And it moves from different areas in the community on different days, because they don't have enough money for bricks and mortar, but they have enough interest to do it as, in a van setting, so. That is not brought up, um, on a couple of occasions, and as I said, we had a presentation, I think we'll see that develop as part of this, well, I don't know. I hope to see, that's what I should say, as part of this.
Counselor Owen.
Yes, through you, Your Worship, um, as someone who has lived experiencing both mental health issues and addiction, I'm very pleased to see. A program coming forward that's going to help youth. Perhaps when I was young and involved, very involved in sports, if a program like this had been available, my life might have been different. And I think that's one of the problems that hopefully this program can address, because a number of sports and alcohol go together, it's a cultural thing. My two big sports were football and hockey, and both those were very tied in with drinking alcohol. School dances were tied in with drinking alcohol, so there's a, this, so. I don't think people should expect a quick change, because it's a cultural change that has to happen. And I'm very pleased to see that, you know, we're not sitting on our phones and saying. Ah, jeez, you know, our youth are no good, well. No, maybe they just need a little help, and in terms of, uh, free stuff, again, I think there's a cultural problem here. Because if you don't have the money to play hockey, or play soccer, or play whatever, there's money available. But culturally, I think a lot of people have problems asking for the help. And maybe this group can sort of, like you said, a different sort of approach, to get around that cultural. Where, then the kid suffers, because the mother or father won't ask for the help, and, and I think this program may, may offer a, a way around this. And, um. There's, there's one thing this program can't, uh, do anything about, and that's the genetic, um, portion of addiction and mental health. But if you, if this program can improve the environment around which the young people are, are involved. Then that can help them not take the wrong steps, so go full force. If it costs us a little bit of money from municipality, I'm more than willing to help, because if I can save one kid from going through everything I went through. Then I'll be very happy, thank you.
Anything further for members of council? Madam Deputy Clerk, I'll have a reading of the motion. Moved by Counselor Rick Owens, seconded by Counselor Janet Stranger, be resolved that report number twenty twenty four CS zero zero three, entitled Planet Youth Timiskaming, you receive for information. All in favor? Opposed, none noted, item carried unanimously, thank you. Item six point three, request to purchase eight municipal lots, it, it was supposed to be Brooklyn, um, but it is Dan Leverter. Thank you, sir.
Good evening again, uh, through you, Madam Mayor, to all of council. So this, uh, I'm just coming back to share some more information prior to, um, the preparation of a bylaw. Uh, this, uh, report is for the eight lots, um, that were, was brought to council February twentieth. Uh, in the report, it outlines the, uh, the number of lots and where they're located. Uh, just to note this evening that the amendments to the agreements of purchase, uh, have been pushed forward due to the delay. From the postponement of the council meeting through the, uh, the flood. Uh, and, uh, that, uh, in accordance to the town's notice policy, uh, we have to give, um, two weeks' notice. So, uh, we will be bringing forth the execution bylaws for the May ninth meeting. Uh, so I, uh, will take any questions if needed, but this is just for information.
Any questions or comments? None noted, Madam Deputy Clerk, I'll have the reading of the motion. Moved by Counselor Lad Shaba, seconded by Counselor Casey Owens, be resolved that report number twenty twenty four EB ten, entitled Request to Purchase Eight Municipal Lots, you receive for information. All in favor? Opposed, none noted, item carried unanimously, thank you, sir. Item number six point four, pros corporate video surveillance policy, Jennifer O'N Troy, municipal clerk, welcome.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. Uh, various departments and divisions have expressed a desire to establish or upgrade video surveillance at various town facilities. Also in an effort to deter crime, enhance, uh, the safety of public and town staff, as well as safeguard municipal assets. Um, after conducting a privacy impact assessment, which, uh, results in avoiding or lessening possible negative, uh, effects. On privacy that may result from a program or a service, I concluded that additional safeguarding measures and enhanced collection and dissemination procedures were also required at the town. As noted in the report, video surveillance may reduce risk and liability exposure, however, it can also create risks, uh, associated with the privacy of individuals. Uh, the collection, use, and disclosure of personal information contained in video surveillance must be compliant with the Municipal Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act. Compliance with that act, which is short form called AMPIPA, is overseen by the Office of the, of Ontario's Information and Privacy Commissioner. Administration have also identified that through a corporate policy such as the one presented, uh, before you this evening. Uh, is, uh, our ability to ensure compliance with the legislative requirement, the legislative requirements. By streamlining, uh, the acquisition and approvals of installing and upgrading video surveillance. As well as, most importantly, the data collection that's done, uh, through consistent application and uniformity in a transparent manner. Uh, there are existing systems in place, uh, funded by previous operating budgets. Uh, through the adoption of this policy, it is certain that future systems will be established. However, as noted in the report, further information would be supplied to council, uh, for those departments and divisions that are currently waiting for those establish, uh, the establishment of this policy. To determine the full scope of their needs and the budgetary requirements. Um, at this time, I will reserve my comments to, um, the, um, I will reserve my comments, and Madam Chair, I'm available, uh, if there are questions.
Thank you, Counselor Owens.
Um, it's, good reporting, reminded me a bit, at first, our municipal politics is very slow in working. Because there's a lot of information in this and policy and red tape, and then I read a, I click on the one of the links to the Ontario Privacy Commission, and it. Then it kind of explains why there's so much red tape when it comes to filming and, and stuff. Uh, two things when it comes to that, so you say in the report, there's three locations that have surveillance, but then you list six of them. There, there's like, is. My math, I don't teach math, but I'm sure it should be six.
It was, it was probably a typo, if, if I list six and it says three, um, it was probably from the draft.
Here, I have issues though, and this is why I, I feel we're elected to speak for the people or to represent the people, is the consultation. Process, if we want to start putting in cameras in new locations, that we. We put in sidewalks and, like, other aspects of the municipality, and we don't have to consult with the population every time, I feel that if we have to engage. With the population every time we want to add a camera, a, and I understand the explanation why they say transparency in that process. But the Ontario Commissioner is not in the business of running municipalities, that's our duty here, and this bogs down. The process even more than what this will bog it down, so I, that's my only concern in this, but other than that, it's a lengthy, robust policy.
Through you, Madam Mayor, if I may, uh, just touch on that, I, I fully agree, it's difficult when you're trying to do consultation, especially when you're trying to implement new, uh, technology and you have to consult. Um, there are, there are opportunities for us to do initial consultation, but it doesn't bar us from being able to, uh, still have the video surveillance. It may just be that, um, there will only be specific, uh, parameters or people that'll be, be able to access the information. Uh, just to, to ensure the safeguarding of that information, for example, um, in close proximity to residential areas, maybe we only. Maybe we only release the information to the Ontario Provincial Police. Uh, um, and somebody has to get get the information through them subsequently. Because they have the blurring technology that potentially other agencies do not have. Uh, and only certain individuals from the municipality are able to view that information. So those are all things that we are, we have control, uh the custody and control of the data. Um, which doesn't uh, that may, may or may not lessen um the red tape around uh the consultation. Uh, but ensures the safeguarding of data.
Thank you for that. Any further questions or comments? Counselor Shaba?
Yeah, through you, Madam Chair. Um, I'm looking at section seven, retention period. Can you uh speak to that? Because uh I, at first, I said, well, how long are we going to keep all this information for? Uh, I will keep them. It says one year, but then uh section seven, a part of it, there's something about four weeks or thirty days. Uh, if law enforcement or public safety purposes or so, I mean, I'm a little bit unclear on that. So when we have a recorded uh. Whatever it is, so how long do we keep them for? So one year after which is going to be disposed of as stated by this. Or we have to wait till it's reviewed by law enforcement uh agencies. So can you clarify that uh section, please?
Certainly, certainly. So retention is always a big topic, especially um uh when staff are speaking with me and. How long does an agency have the ability to to um approach the municipality to obtain data? So in, when I'm reviewing section seven, it identifies that um for law enforcement, for the pro, public safety purposes. Uh, and they'll be given thirty days. Uh, and we get rid of data after thirty days. If we've downloaded data, then we keep it for a year. We don't, or or more. Depending on how long um the a agency may need uh for any kind of court proceedings or whatnot. The problem with keeping data longer than uh than required is that we open ourselves up from an accountability and. Uh, transparency purposes and liability uh under uh privacy laws. Because and uh we could, we could also be identifying ourselves in a situation where we're gaining gaining a lot of data. And we have to pay for that data. So it's, it's twofold. It's, it's the, the largeness of, of data. Management and also keeping what we need instead of keeping what we may need. Um, so in essence, we would keep data that is not recording data that is thirty days and then we would dispose of it. Um, and then if somebody asks us for data, then we keep that for a minimum of one year. If they ask us to keep it for longer, depending on if they have a case, like I said, uh then we would certainly work with the agency. That's what that section is saying.
Thank you. Anything further for members of council?
Madam Deputy Clerk, I'll have the reading of the motion. Moved by Councilor Patrick Kylie, seconded by Councilor Rick Owen. Be resolved that report number twenty twenty four A T M zero one zero entitled proposed corporate video surveillance policy be received. And that council approved the corporate video surveillance policy as presented. And that council direct that the corporate video surveillance policy take effect immediately. And finally, that the corporate video surveillance policy be numbered and inserted into the corporate policy manual.
All in favor? Opposed? None noted? Item carried unanimous? Item six point five supplemental proposed twenty twenty four user fees and charges, Jennifer Montroy, municipal clerk.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. I'll start us off with a brief recap of the events to date. Uh, council received a comprehensive report on the March, uh on March nineteenth where questions and comments were preliminary made. Um, preliminarily, sorry, I'm having a hard time, preliminarily made by council. At this time, it was noted that in an effort to allow council to consider any comments made. At a public meeting, that it would receive another opportunity to deliberate prior to the reading of any proposed bylaws. As such, and so directed, and in accordance with the municipal act, a public meeting was held on April fourth. I note that as per the proceedings of the, and the minutes of the public meeting, that there were no comments made and were received by the public. Uh, the direction stemming from the April fourth public meeting was to return the topic to the April sixteenth meeting for further deliberation by council. And given the postponement of that meeting due to our flooding emergency, this process was rescheduled for this evening. Uh, a few supplemental items to consider this evening prior to the deliberations. I wanted to reestablish that based on the data collected from this year's budget survey. Most respondents noted that they would be amenable to the town introducing new fees and or increasing to. Or increases to user fees and charges to balance the budget and take the pressure off the tax levy. Uh, as such, the budget revenues established for twenty twenty four with respect to Community Services Department and the Clerks. Uh, Office Division were projected with these proposed twenty twenty four user fees as presented. So uh just a note, if council was to resolve not to proceed with the proposed changes or additions. To those rates, so that would be to recreation, museum, cemetery, or um uh Clerks Office Division. Uh, just for recreation, museum and cemetery. In their entirety, there would be approximately a thirty five thousand two hundred dollars shortfall in revenues for community services. And approximately uh one thousand dollar deficit in revenues for Clerks Office Division. If so directed through recommendation this evening, all corresponding bylaws and schedules related to the proposed twenty twenty four user fees. And charges would return to council on May ninth for three readings with an effective date of July first. For enactment of all changes and additions. And as always, administration is committed to marketing any kind of change or amendment to user fees. Through its channels such as the news, um media releases, radio broadcasts, town's Facebook page. Official website, inserts in the water tax mailouts, the monthly municipal update, et cetera. And should council have any specific questions surrounding the proposed changes to fees, rates or charges? The Chair will invite the responsible director to respond accordingly. Thank you, Madam Mayor. That is my summary.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? None noted. Madam Deputy Clerk, you may read the bylaw. The motion, sorry.
Moved by Councilor Janice Ranger, seconded by Councilor Lad Shaba. Be resolved that council approve the twenty twenty four user fees and charges established for the various town departments and divisions as presented. And finally, that the proposed bylaws and respective schedules as presented, each be brought forward for three readings on May ninth, twenty twenty four.
All in favor? Opposed? None noted? Item carried unanimous? Item number seven is consideration of notices of motion. At this time, I will ask Acting Mayor Counselor Owens to take my spot.
Item seven, excuse me, item seven, consideration of notices of motion, seven point one, Mayor White, uh return to combine. Or not even, uh Ontario Good Roads Association and Roma Conference. Um, Karen?
Thank you, sir. Uh, through you, just um as per circulated, I just want to hit on the fact that in twenty nineteen. O G R A Conference A G M, uh a resolution was passed regarding the reestablishment of the annual combined conference. And it did pass. And then um because of COVID, it's been pushed and whatnot. Um, and whereas not all persons who wish to attend can actually um attend in person, just it's cost prohibitive. They do want a hybrid participation option to be considered. So that's two of the things that I did want to highlight from the Terrence Bay. This is a support motion. So it's not been drafted in the town of Kirkland Lake. We're just throwing our support through it. During um the recent conference that we just returned from yesterday. I did have a chance to speak with other council members in small and rural communities. And the cost of these conferences is quite a bit. And so if these two were able to be combined again, it would save considerable monies. For not only small municipalities, but for all municipalities. So I just do, do think it's something worthy of supporting and worthy of reminding these associations that perhaps it's time to to combine again.
Counselor Owen, Owen as a second, do you have anything to add to this?
I feel that a hundred percent, handing saved money is good for the taxpayer and we should support it. Thank you.
Any questions or comments from council?
All right. Moved by Mayor Stacy White, seconded by Councilor Rick Owen. Be resolved that council for the corporation of the town of Kirkland Lake, support the resolution from the township of Terrence Bay. Providing the returns of the combined Ontario Good Roads Association and Rural Ontario Municipal Association Annual Conference of Attention.
All in favor?
Thank you, Acting Mayor Owens. Item number eight, introduction, reading and consideration of bylaws. Eight point one, bylaw number twenty four dash oh two three.
Moved by Counselor Casey Owens, seconded by Counselor Patrick Kylie. Be resolved that the following bylaw be read, numbered, passed, signed by the mayor and the municipal clerk. And seal of the corporation be affixed thereto, bylaw number twenty four dash zero two three. Being the bylaw to set the municipal water and wastewater rates for twenty twenty four.
All in favor? Opposed? None noted? Item carried unanimous? Item eight point two, bylaw number twenty four dash oh two four. Twenty four dash oh two four, setting twenty twenty four tax rate, tax rates. Can I have a mover and a seconder? Counselor Ranger move, Counselor Owen second.
Madam Mayor, just an interjection, it's the tax ratios, not the tax rate.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I ask for a recording, please. Oh, yep. Uh, so moved by Counselor Janice Ranger, seconded by Counselor Casey Owens. Be resolved that the following bylaw be read, numbered, passed, signed by the mayor and the municipal clerk and seal of the corporation be affixed thereto. Bylaw number twenty four dash zero two four, being a bylaw to set tax ratios for municipal purposes for the year twenty twenty four. Counselor Shaba?
Aye. Do we have a mover for this?
Yes, it was Counselor Ranger and Counselor Owens.
Counselor Kylie?
Carried unanimous. Item number eight point three, bylaw number twenty four dash oh two five. Twenty four dash oh two five, adopt twenty twenty four municipal budget. May I have a mover and a seconder? Moved by Counselor Owen, seconded by Counselor Kylie.
Excellent. I wish for this to be recorded. So moved by uh Counselor. Moved by Counselor Rick Owen, seconded by Counselor Patrick Kylie. Uh, be resolved that the following bylaw be read, numbered, passed, signed by the mayor and the municipal clerk and seal of the corporation be affixed thereto. Bylaw number twenty four dash zero two five, being a bylaw to adopt the twenty twenty four municipal budget. Counselor Ranger?
Aye.
Counselor Shaba? Counselor Owens?
Yes.
Counselor Dyke?
Yes.
Counselor Owen?
Yes.
Counselor Kylie?
Yea.
Yea.
Yea. Item passed unanimous. Item number eight point four, bylaw down number twenty four dash oh two six. Twenty four dash oh two six, striking twenty twenty four rates of taxation. May I have a mover and a seconder? Counselor Owens as mover, Counselor Owen as seconder.
Moved by Counselor Casey Owens, seconded by Counselor Rick Owen. Be resolved that the following bylaw be read, numbered, passed, signed by the mayor and the municipal clerk. And seal of the corporation be affixed thereto, bylaw number twenty four dash zero two six, being a bylaw to adopt the estimates of all sums required during the year. And to strike the rates of taxation for the year twenty twenty four.
Okay. All in favor? None noted. Item carried unanimous. Sorry. Item number nine, questions from council to staff. There were, were none um sent in ahead of the meeting this evening. Item number ten, notices of motion. I will be bringing one forward um shortly regarding resource sharing. Item number eleven, counselors report. Counselor Owens?
So through you, Madam Chair, um many of us may speak on this subject this evening. I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I want to get my take on it. So I I'd like to take this opportunity to thank staff for going above and beyond in the last weeks. Um. To do what you guys have done and not just you as a staff, but your staff below, all the way down to. All staff in all departments and up here as well, uh to go above and beyond the call of duty. While some are being criticized for what, how the town handled it. While some had to make the choice between helping the town and saving their own basements, uh would have been a tough call. Uh, I'm, my house flooded as well and I was able to save it. Or to limit the damage and having to make the choice between the town and my house, it would have been a very hard decision and I know some staff have had to do it. So I just thanks, I agree, for the help, thanks.
Counselor Owen?
Yes, through you, your worship. I just want to echo what Counselor Owen said. I know there were at least two staff members whose basements were flooded while they were out. Trying to help the residents of Kirkland Lake. And I know there's been some negative uh comments on uh social media, as there always would be. But what I saw in this community made me really proud to be a Kirkland Laker. I saw neighbors helping neighbors, neighbors helping friends, strangers helping strangers. And I saw town staff from senior management down to the people that are in the ditches and in the creeks. Working their, I'm gonna say it, maybe not parliamentary, but working their butts off. To help their neighbors and to help the town. And I'm very proud to say that I live in Kirkland Lake. And this is a good community. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And Counselor Kylie?
Uh, yeah, Counselor Owen and myself attended the D S A P meeting last night. Uh, through approval of the audit of financial statements. As well, there was some discussion on uh reserve funds. Uh, both Rick and I found that they were excessive. Uh, Counselor Owen uh has requested uh a full review of the reserve policy and. The items breakdown of the reserves uh be presented at a D S A P meeting in due course.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything further for members of council? Um, honestly, I had, of course, something drafted to that staff that, but I couldn't say it any better. Um, seeing it firsthand, like the counselors have said, um during that first twelve hours. Um, seeing people having to make choice out of their own self-interest or the community, they chose the community. And I don't think people appreciate the level of devotion our staff has to this community. I know it's questioned from time to time, but seeing it firsthand in this building. Um, there is no question where our staff's loyalties lie and it is to the community. Time and time again, in sacrifice of their own lives. So that's really important, I think, to keep in perspective. And um the level of gratitude, I feel, seeing it firsthand. I just, I cannot express how much our staff goes well above and beyond and our community members as well. I think um Chief Earl Gregg could attest that they had enough food and supplies to feed an army. Um, and it was just Kirkland Lake shines under pressure. And we certainly did, again, this last ten, eleven, twelve days. Um, so moving on. Last Friday, April nineteenth, I delivered the first state of the community address to members of local businesses at the Chamber of Commerce Best in Business Gala. Uh, though it was not without its challenging, challenges as the first address, and if you were there, you know. Um, it is my hope all future mayors will take this annual opportunity to speak with the business owners and not-for-profit organizers. They are the literal economic drivers of Kirkland Lake. So to make them aware of the, what the municipal corporation is offering and supporting them with. So to make them aware of the, what the municipal corporation is offering and supporting them with. Um, is, is just vital and I hope all future mayors take that opportunity to speak directly with them. C A O Smith and I returned last evening from the Ontario Good Roads Conference in Toronto. In which we delegated to the Ministry of Infrastructure in relation to the Hughes Housing Enabling Water System Fund application. If successful, it has the potential to support two phases of sub-development. That will see the largest expansion in North Tumiscum in the last two decades. Thankfully, we will not have long to wait on this decision as the province stated the announcements will happen later this spring. So they, uh, from reports, they want shovels in the ground by September twenty-seventh. So this is not something that we will have to wait long term for, so everyone keep their fingers crossed. Um, during these conferences, there's always opportunities of, uh, for learning, but I felt. This specifically, it was lost on me. It was well, well beyond my technical capabilities. Um, I definitely think it is more relevant to staff and members like Director Forteng. We had a, a little laugh about it. Um, the only thing I was able to retain is we should be washing bridges. So definitely, as we brought the motion forward in support of Terrence Bay. If these two conferences could be looped back, it would give politicians the opportunity to talk about policy and stuff that. It matters to us and give that technical knowledge to the people that actually do the work. Pardon me. Um, and I just wanted to mention as well. Thanks to, um, C A O Smith, I did have the opportunity to engage with the premier of Ontario. Um, he came off the stage and Alan said to me, oh, look, there's the premier, you should go talk to him. And I paused because we were well into the, um, aisle and I had to trip over people to get to him, but I thought, you know what? Kirkland Lake deserves somebody that will take the opportunity when it presents itself. So I tripped over many of people, um, quite literally and got to him. I was one of only twenty people, that maybe less.
Less than that.
Yeah, um, that were able to have an audience and I made sure to let him know that I was from Kirkland Lake. And we were going to delegate the next day and, um, we need his support. And he was very, very welcoming and a couple of people later and he was whisked away. So here's to hoping that we, um, left an impression. If you didn't see me coming. But definitely, you know what? Kirkland Lake deserves every opportunity that we can take. And so it was just absolutely my pleasure to do that for, for the community and hopefully. Within a couple of weeks, we'll know that we got big funding for, we're going to do big things. Mm-hmm.
Go ahead. So moved, uh, by Counselor Lad Shaba, seconded by Counselor Rick Owen. Be it resolved that the verbal updates from members of council will be received. All in favor? Opposed, none noted, item carried unanimous. Item number twelve, twelve point one, proclamation, community living month, May twenty twenty-four. Whereas Community Living Ontario represents more than twelve thousand people. Including people who have intellectual disability, their family and concerned citizens. Through a federation of a hundred and seventeen local associations across Ontario. And whereas Community Living Ontario promotes values and community development. Contributes to social policy, advocates while providing crucial services to people with disabilities and their families. And whereas raising awareness of inclusion and public acceptance for the support of these services has started. With and been championed by Community Living Kirkland Lake for seventy-seven years. And whereas Community Living Kirkland Lake provides residential, community and support services. For over eighty people and employs over seventy-five members of our community. And whereas the quality of these services depends largely on the dedication of trained workers. Who provide these services while working towards community inclusion for the people they support. And whereas the ability of these services helps to improve the quality of life for everyone. While making our community stronger and more stable. And whereas the greater recognition and understanding of the critical role that the community living plays in our community. Is needed to ensure the continued availability and improvement of these services. Now, therefore, I, Stacy White, mayor of the town of Kirkland Lake, do hereby proclaim the month of May twenty twenty-four. As community living month in the town of Kirkland Lake. So moved by Counselor Janice Ranger, seconded by Counselor Casey Owens. Be it resolved that council sanction the proclamation for Community Living Month, May twenty twenty-four in the town of Kirkland Lake. All in favor? Opposed?
Item number twelve point two, uh, D T S S A V Housing Services. It was just for information purposes.
Moved by Counselor Rick Owen, seconded by Counselor Lad Shaba. Be it resolved that council received the infographic entitled D T S S A V twenty twenty-four housing services for information.
All in favor? Opposed, none noted, item carried unanimous. We'll now take a ten minute recess. Okay, we are resuming after a ten minute recess. Madam Clerk? Deputy clerk, sorry.
Moved by Counselor Patrick Kylie, uh, seconded by Counselor Janice Ranger. Be it resolved that council adjourn in camera at six oh eight P M pursuant to the section two thirty-nine, section two of the municipal act two thousand and one. As amended, to discuss proposed or pending acquisition of or disposition of land by the municipality or local board for the following reason. Item thirteen point one, request to purchase lots two fifty-five to two fifty-eight on Thanh M one fifty-eight dash Thanh B. Heart Mining Plains L two six five five and R S C two ten west of two fifty-three Pike Avenue. All in favor? Opposed, none noted, item carried unanimous.
Okay, we shall now reconvene open.
Uh, moved by Counselor Lad Shaba, seconded by Counselor Rick Owen. Be it resolved that council reconvene an open session at six thirty-one P M.
All in favor? Opposed, none noted, item carried unanimous. Item number fourteen, matters from closed session, there are none this evening. Item number fifteen, confirmation bylaw, fifteen point one, bylaw number twenty-four dash oh two seven.
Moved by Counselor Casey Owens, seconded by Counselor Patrick Kylie. Be it resolved that the following bylaw be read, numbered, passed, signed by the mayor municipal clerk and the seal of the corporation be affixed there too. Bylaw number twenty-four dash zero two seven, being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at a special meeting held Thursday, April twenty fifth, twenty twenty-four.
All in favor? Opposed, none noted, item carried unanimous. Item number sixteen, adjournment.
Moved by Counselor Dolly Dyken, seconded by Counselor Janice Ranger. Be it resolved that this special meeting of council do now adjourn at six thirty-two P M.
All in favor? Opposed, item carried unanimous. Thank you, everyone.